Good evening. I'd like to call Girleville Town Council Meeting for Tuesday, February 9th, 2016, in order, in this 6:32. At this time, I ask that you please stand for the invocation by Father John F. Can from St. Joan of Arc Church, and after that, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our town. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be leaders your people need. Help us see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us, and to treat all persons no matter how weak or poor with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance, Senator Leighton, of the United States of America, in the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mrs. President.
Councilman Span.
Here.
Councilwoman Carol Miano, absent. Councilwoman Margaret Uselak, absent. Councilwoman Chrissy Behren.
Here.
Councilwoman Sean Pettit.
Here.
Councilwoman Roxanne Lamarcas.
Here.
And President Richard Hardaway.
President, thank you. We have five presidents. We have a forum, petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. I have a letter here from State Representative Julie Autoff from District 19. Dear Richard, I just wanted to take this opportunity to make you aware of House Bill 1110, which provides for a special distribution for each county's local income tax trust account. As the local elected leaders in Lake County, your input and feedback helps me make informed decisions on issues critical to our district. Undoubtedly, local governments face unique challenges in being able to provide for the health, welfare, and safety of its citizens. Under House Bill 1110, the majority of the local income tax revenue held in reserve by the state would be returned to local governments to be used at their discretion. This puts $444,000 back into the hands of locals across the state, and $27,583,000 to Lake County. We recognize that this is a special distribution to local income tax revenue raised by you should be used for your community's specific needs, which is why House Bill 1110 contains no additional barriers or directives. Since these revenues were raised by local officials, we believe our local leaders are best equipped to decide how to spend the money. House Bill 1110 has passed the House by a vote of 98 to 0 and is waiting further consideration. As the legislative session progresses, I will be certain to follow House Bill 1110 closely and welcome any feedback you may have on this bill. Thank you for the service you provide to our community. If you have any questions regarding this or any other legislative issues, please do not hesitate to reach out. Sincerely, Julie Autoff, State Representative, District 19. So, that's pretty good news for us. Then we have one more from, I'll do that one on the public side. Okay, let's, consent agenda, council payable register voucher approval for February 9th along with the approval of town council minute meetings for January 26th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Behren, that we approve the consent agenda and the minutes from January 26th are in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Budget finance, Councilman Pettit.
No report, Mr. President.
Public works, Councilman Span. Council affairs, Councilwoman Uselak is absent. Does anyone have anything under her? Personnel policy and employee benefits, Councilwoman Behren.
Yes, if Bruce was here, we would be setting up a meeting for the insurance.
Okay. Anything else?
I would have set up a meeting with every department to kind of go over things and see where every department is, what they're lacking, what they want, any kind of feedback they have with these concerned.
Public safety, Councilwoman Uselak, is there, does anybody have anything? I've got a couple of things. Hopefully, everyone's had their annual reports from the police department. We looked at those numbers, and those were some great numbers for us this year. You guys did a good job, Joe.
Thank you. I thank the officers on the road.
Yeah, the numbers are.
And proactive, and we had a good year for the.
Yeah, I think that that's the key, is that you guys are proactive. We're not waiting until things become epidemic before we respond to them. We try to respond to them as they occur. So, good job. Commend everybody, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
With respect to the police department's annual report, may I make a comment for the record? Chief, I review the report. It's a remarkable report for the Miraval Police Department activity in calendar year 2015 that our citizens should be proud of. Sometimes we don't realize what our police officers do every day, seven days a week, 24 hours a day. Our department responded last year to 25,000 calls for service. That means 25,000 helps to residents, business owners, industry owners in our town. That's an average of 68 calls per day, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, every day of the year. And remarkably, our officers received last year 4,900 hours of training to improve their skill and ability as law enforcement officers. That's an average of 94 training hours per police officer. So, for the record, Mr. President and members of the council, our police officers are first well-trained, and second, they perform their duties for the citizens.
Thank you, sir. And then one more thing. I received a letter from the Indiana FOP Labor Council, here, Councilman Hardaway, the collective bargaining agreement between Town of Miraval, FOP Lodge 168 expires July 116. Pursuant to Article 2, Section 2.2 of collective bargaining agreement, the parties agreed to commence negotiations no later than March 1st, 2016, to extend this agreement or adopt a new agreement. The lodge respectfully requests that negotiations with the town to adopt a new agreement be on or about March 1st, 2016. Please contact and write me myself or any member of the lodge's wage and benefit committee to establish a date. Richard M. Brock, Field Representative, Indiana FOP. I'm going to give this to you, Mr. Timmy, and ask that you get with the public safety committee, that you guys figure out what you need to do there.
Very good.
Anything else on the public safety? Parks and Recreation, Councilwoman Lamarcas.
Yes, the Parks Department has submitted their 2015 annual report, and if anybody has any questions, please see Jan in the Parks Department.
Thank you. Environmental Affairs, Councilwoman Behren.
Yes. In going to the solid waste management meetings, I found out that they have reduced their Lake County solid waste drop-off sites to Munster, Hobart, and Crown Point, because that's where they get the most drop-offs out. And then they also started a new program that's going lidless for Lake Tech's paint disposal. And, Mr. Lake?
Yeah. Earlier today, we had a pre-construction meeting with Gulf Construction. This is in regards to the Ross Meadow Farms Drainage Improvements Project. They're anxious to start, and so we were just coordinating so we're all on the same page, so then they can start mobilization and construction. We're also sponsoring eight Miraval schools to participate in a rain barrel decorating contest, which will be presented Northwest Indiana Earth Day Celebration on April 16th at the Porter County Expo Center. And next week, I'll be speaking at the LTAP Drainage Conference on Low Impact Development Standards. We are the only community in Northwest Indiana that have low impact development standards, and we're one of the few in the state. So, we'll be showing them how it works and some of the technicalities and all the benefits of that. And then we're also looking at some strategic planning in relations to our stormwater master plan. That's all I have.
Thank you. Economic Development, Councilman Pettit.
You skipped me.
Who did I skip? Ah, we'll get him, then I'll come back to you.
No report.
Election Public Relations, Councilwoman Lamarcas.
Yes, the Clerk Charter's Office is offering tax preparation again for seniors. You can call 769-3501 to make an appointment. Also, last meeting, I announced the 4th of July parade will be on the 4th. We've picked a time. It's going to be at 12 o'clock.
12 moved, but the parade's.
On the 4th, yes.
Mr. President, under Councilperson Lamarcas, committee, the state of the region actually had to be moved. It was supposed to be tomorrow night, realizing that it was Ash Wednesday. It is now scheduled for March 2nd at 6 o'clock at the Radisson. Again, it will be the Town of Miraval, the City of Crown Point, Miraval School Corporation, Crown Point School Corporation, and the Lake County Economic Alliance. Five entities will give their annual update.
Okay. Thank you. And we'd like as many as possible to attend that. Mr. Span.
That was March 2nd?
Yes.
March 2nd.
Thank you.
Utility liaison, Councilwoman Behren.
Yes. I want to make sure that everybody keeps saving their caps. There are a couple of things that are probably going to come out of the cap program that haven't come out yet. So, the program has not died off, went away, or gone anywhere. Everybody is still saving their caps from Crown Point to Hobart to all the communities.
Okay. Somebody asked me their claim that she wanted to know if there was a brochure or something that she could look at to see what the cap program offers as far as bents, whatever else they offer.
I don't know if there is or not. I mean, I would, I'll find out.
See if you can do that. Thank you.
I'll find out next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Abandoned properties, we went to South Bend last week and sat in on their bike hearings. And next week, when we have our workshop, we're going to be rolling out some different programs as to how we're going to enhance our bike program. We'll bring you up to speed tomorrow, John. But it was a good meeting, and we are moving forward. General orders, ordinance is first reading, ordinance 16-03, an ordinance of Town of Miraval, Lake County, Indiana. Appropriate additional monies within the 2015 G O bond for the year 2016, not included in the current budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, Councilwoman Behren, that we approve ordinance 16-03. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Span.
Yes.
Councilwoman Behren.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lamarcas.
Yes.
And President Hardaway.
Yes. Motion carries 5-0. Ordinance 16-04, an ordinance of Town of Miraval, Lake County, Indiana. Appropriating additional monies within the 2015 RDC bond for the year 2016, not included in the current budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Behren, that we approve ordinance 16-04. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Span.
Yes.
Councilwoman Behren.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lamarcas.
Yes.
And President Hardaway.
Yes. Motion carries 5-0. Ordinance 16-05, ordinance of Town of Miraval, Lake County, Indiana. Appropriating additional monies within the firefighters' equipment fund for the year 2016, not included in the current budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Behren, second by Councilman Pettit, we approve ordinance 16-05. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Span.
Yes.
Councilwoman Behren.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lamarcas. President Hardaway.
Yes. Motion carries 5-0. That concludes first reading ordinances. Second reading ordinance, ordinance 16-02, an ordinance of Town of Miraval, Lake County, Indiana. Abending ordinance 15-33 of the parks' non-reverting program fees for the year 2016.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilman Span, that we approve ordinance 16-05 on second reading, and because this is the second reading ordinance, at this time, we will open it up to the public for public comment. Is there any public comment on ordinance 16-02? Any public comment on ordinance 16-02? Any public comment on ordinance 16-02? Roll call, please.
Councilman Span.
Yes.
Councilwoman Behren.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lamarcas.
Yes.
President Hardaway.
Yes. That concludes second reading ordinances. At this time, I will go to resolutions. Resolution 16-07, a resolution of Town of Miraval, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2016 budget within certain categories.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Behren, that we approve resolution 16-02. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Resolution 16-08, a resolution of Town of Miraval, Town Council, supporting enactment of legislation to reform how big-box stores are assessed.
So moved.
Second.
Who's second?
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Behren, second by Councilwoman Lamarcas, that we approve resolution 16-08. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I guess to you and John, to everybody, I don't have a problem with the resolution, but I think we ought to include the redevelopment commission in this resolution. I think we need to contact London Witty, contact Baker Daniels. We spend money with those guys to advise us. Bob has been up here to handle the TIF districts. He brought it to our attention along with Angie Guernsey two years ago, I guess it was, when we first heard about this. Yeah, I don't know, John, if, you know, I mean technically, not to, the redevelopment controls the TIF districts, basically. I mean, you know, the council approves resolutions and bond issues, but the authority rests with the redevelopment commission, does it not?
It does.
I mean, this is, I know a resolution is a policy statement, and again, I don't have a problem, but I think that we need to talk to Bruce, have him contact London Witty, and get those guys up at the next redevelopment commission, have this issue brought back up. You know, I don't know, just a thought.
Okay, now my question, since you and John both, should we hold off on sending letters to the legislators now?
Well, timing-wise, no.
May I comment?
Because you're in the, you're in the what you call it.
Right.
You know, you're in the, you're the what you call it.
Okay, go.
You're in session right now.
All right, we do have letters ready, all right?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
Yes. With respect to this issue, Councilman Pettit is correct that the concern is not only that of the town council, the concern is of the redevelopment commission, because that's where the TIF districts, which potentially could be impacted if there's improper assessment of big-box stores, could be harmed and could be threatened. However, I recommend for tonight that the council, since this is a council resolution, not a redevelopment resolution, as prepared, pass it, and that you send the letters, Mr. President, to our legislators, because as Councilman Pettit pointed out, this legislation is moving now. The legislators need to know now that the Town of Miraval elected officials support it. And if our consultants come up, Councilman, for redevelopment commission meeting, I suggest that in advance of that meeting, that they communicate with Jim Bennett so that they can actually go over.
What the impact's going to be.
Hard numbers.
Right.
And then they can give us at the redevelopment commission meeting, a, more than just an educated guess, they can actually talk specific numbers and let us know the degree of the monetary threat, if it exists.
And usually.
I think that's a wise suggestion.
And usually Bob will let us know, let Bruce and I know, you know, where we're at. Does anyone know where 308 is in the process, downstate?
My last information is that it has passed the committee in the Senate. I don't know offhand, I apologize, Councilman.
That's okay.
I don't know whether it's, whether it's passed the full Senate, but the expectation was that it was going to pass the full Senate and then go to the House. We're sending this resolution to our House members and senators that represent Lake County so that they're all on board, knowing that the town officials want this bill passed.
All right, well, I guess then what I'm going to do, Mr. President, technically, is still the President of Redevelopment from last year. I'm going to talk to Bruce when he gets back. I'm going to call an RDC workshop before the council meeting on the 23rd. Hopefully, that'll be enough time, and the RDC can do a similar action. Maybe I'll just make it a meeting, John. Should we just make it a meeting?
Sure.
So we can take an action and pass.
You'll need to, so you could take action on.
Take action, and if Bob or day, Bob or Scott can make it up, because we've got bonds out there that this, you know, can dramatically impact the debt service, and I know there's projects, you know, Councilperson Behren's got some, we're fin, we paid Mississippi, but we do have to pay the rest of 73rd and Madison Street that have not been paid, and will start when the weather breaks here in March or April. So, you know, there's three big projects out there that, you know, I don't know when this will hit us, which, again, we need to find out from Bob Swenson and Scott Peck, so.
And, Mr. President, members of the council, the concern that Councilman Pettit is raising is specifically mentioned. We're telling the legislators in this town council resolution that we are concerned about the ability of our TIF districts to pay the principal and interest on the bond obligations if there is not proper assessment, full appropriate assessment of the big-box stores instead of the dramatically reduced assessment, which in some cases has been a reduction of 45%.
And it can't hurt.
Our bond issues were set, as the council members know, based on anticipated assessed valuation, and if part of that base is dramatically and artificially reduced, it does threaten the bond issues.
Right.
But it doesn't just affect the bond issues, it also affects the paving issues that are going to go on, especially in my ward, because the TIF money that I use for paving Sedona and Miraval Road, and of course, 86 Avenue that's going to get developed, is not coming out of any bond that we're going to take out for paving for the town. And any money that I have left over from my ward goes leftover for anybody else in the town, any councilman.
Right.
It goes to help pave their wards.
If we can, if we can keep the paving in 5 and 6 out of the TIF districts.
Exactly.
It's more money for the other five wards.
But people don't realize what kind of, the tax-paying citizens do not realize how big of an impact this is actually going to be until this happens, because we're not going to have money to pave roads like we have right now, because the simple fact that 5 and 6 have a very good TIF district that is contributing money to our paving. So, I mean, it's going to be, it's detrimental to the Town of Miraval that this.
In many ways.
And it can't hurt to have another letter. Rich, you're going to sign it as council president. I can sign it as redevelopment commission president, and they get a couple of letters, even though, I mean, they don't know that five of us are the redevelopment, you know, we, council is the redevelopment. They're going to get a letter from the Miraval Redevelopment, and it's going to have more, you know, I got two letters, there's a concern. So, along those same lines, John, and as far as calling the meeting for two weeks, I would ask that you prepare a similar letter. If Rich is going to sign one, have it ready for, you know, I don't know what, you know, have the redevelopment commission president sign it, I guess. I don't know.
That works. It works.
What I can do, Councilman, is prepare a similar resolution for the redevelopment commission and similar correspondence that the president of the commission would sign.
Okay.
And perhaps in the two, within the two weeks, if our consultants in Indianapolis could consult and speak with Jim Bennett, it would be helpful if at our redevelopment commission meeting, if we had a more precise read on the exact dollar.
Impact it's going to have.
Impact or lack of impact on our bond issues, because perhaps that second resolution could even drill down a little more specifically on our concerns.
Well, we probably ought to ask Bob for his worst-case scenario, because there could be an appeal from some of these big boxes, and, you know, we know who they are and where they're at in the TIF district, but if they appeal, they may not get their full appeal either, so we may not be hit as hard, but if Bob gives us the worst-case scenario, we're ready for it. So, yeah, and I'll talk to Bruce about this tomorrow.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moves? Carries. Okay, that concludes resolutions. Now we're going to BZI actions, petitioner adjustments, fur, owner Myers, request special exception approval for a car wash facility, 605 West 81st Avenue, C-3 Highway Commercial, case number Z35E10-1015.
Hi, Justin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, is there, is that report?
This has gone through several meetings, and they received unanimous approval at the border zoning appeals meeting on January 27th for the special exception for this petitioner only, of this location only, for this use only, and that was the condition.
Anything, any questions for Justin?
The only comment I have, Mr. President, and I was, Justin and I have had our discussions at the Plan Commission, and for the public record, I want to ask either Justin and/or the town, and if not, I'll make it part of a condition, the cut on US 30 has to remain open. Will it remain open between the location and discount tire?
We have no control.
I know you don't have any control over, but I want to make sure that later on, the petition isn't made to end that, that for traffic flow, that there's another access point off of US 30, based on the site plan that I see in front of me. I don't think we asked or ended up for a traffic study, did we not? I never saw a traffic study.
We didn't, no, we didn't.
Which is, which is fine, you know, and we've kind of gone through this iteration of stacking and Miraval Road and the access and all that stuff, but that layout has worked for, since 1998, 1999, and so that's just, so it's on the record.
We have, we have no plans to change it, and it wouldn't be advantageous for us to change it.
Okay. Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve Z35E10-01015. I'm going to add the condition that the US 30 cut remain open.
That there be only one cut?
No, the right-in, right-out only on US 30 remains open, both for the town and for this operation. No one will petition to have that cut closed.
I don't think that you should be doing that. I think it's my ward, and I think that if I want to, if later on, this becomes a traffic issue, and the, any, the, I only want, if it becomes a traffic issue to where people are cutting out like they do at Kmart, like they were doing at Kmart before they closed that, and they made it a stoplight, I think that we need to close the exit and make it any only. And I think that me as the councilwoman should be able to tell you, Sean Pettit, as your council, as your own area, that I don't think that that condition should apply to my ward. I mean, I hate to disagree with you on this, but it's my ward, and I don't think that a condition that you can't see the forehand of what kind of traffic is going to be cutting back out onto 30, and what kind of people are going to be stopping and waving people out on that second lane or that third lane of traffic, and a fatality happens to where you can make that kind of condition.
We have an existing business that is on that, that road.
You know, Sean, all those businesses are just fine if something happens with that traffic to where that needs to be closed, to where people aren't exiting onto 30 and they're going out the light, or they're going to Miraval Road at that light, are not going to suffer because of that.
It's a relief, it's a relief output.
It's my ward.
Where if you cut, if you close that cut on 30, more traffic is going to go onto Miraval Road, more traffic's going to go onto 30 at the light anyway.
Well, I think that that shouldn't be a condition that's put on by you for the future use of Miraval, or onto 30, because you want to put a condition on there. Let's say seven years from now, that becomes a problem, and you got the condition on there that should never be put on, that should never, ever be put on that. that should never be put on, that should never, ever be put on that.
We can, with all due respect, we can put any condition on there for the health, safety, and general welfare by Indiana code-
That's why it shouldn't be put on there for the health and safety.
And, we as a legislative body, at our discretion, at any time, can bring any type of action granted by the BZA, whether it's special exception or use variance, and we've done that before, Rich. We brought the barber shop up on North Broadway when we were having problems, and we took it away, didn't we? Okay? Anything can have a six-month or nine-month or what-have-you review. I'm just, it, my opinion hasn't changed, Justin. I have absolutely no problem whatsoever with the business. My problem is the traffic on that corner, and it's, and it's, it's not gonna change. I mean, I'm sorry, guys, I was a transportation planner for seven years at NERPC. I developed a regional bike waste plan, I developed a transportation plan for three counties. You know, I'm not just flippantly, you know, dispensing this elimination of the cut.
I'm not, I'm-
You know, I mean, so, it's, you know, if the motion, if the motion dies, Mr. President, it dies, and then we vote how we vote, as you've always said in the past. So, you know, I brought up an issue, I voted for it at the Plan Commission, I voted for the site plan, didn't have a problem, did I? Okay? I don't think it's, you know, is what it is. Like I said, I've set my piece for the public record, so.
Okay, we got a motion to the floor to approve this petition.
Subject to the stated conditions.
Subject to the stated conditions, then we get a second. Okay, motion dies for lack of a second. Okay, now.
Is there another motion?
Is there another motion?
I wanna make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Barron, second by Councilwoman Lamarcus, that we approve, uh, where we at? Uh, okay, she's ready to help me out.
Um, Z35E10-1015.
Okay, uh, okay, let's have a roll call.
Okay.
Discuss.
Oh, is there any discussion, I'm sorry? Any discussion? Roll, roll call, please.
Councilman Spann?
Stay.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Stain.
Councilwoman Lamarcus?
Yes.
And President Haraway?
Yes, motion carries with three yeses and two extensions.
Thank you.
Ah, next one, Karma Cigars, owner Karma Cigars, special exception approval for restaurant in the cigar shop, phase two of the cigar shop interior remodel, 850 West 81st Avenue, C-3 Highway Commercial, case number Z4E1-0116.
Hello, my name is Darren Shaw.
Is there any, are there any questions for Derek?
There was a condition placed on this by the border zoning appeals on April 20, uh, on January 27th, 2016, for this petitioner only, of this location only, for this use only.
Any discussion?
Oh, I motion.
Second.
I motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Barron, second by Councilwoman Lamarcus, that we approve, uh, Z4E1-0116. Uh, is there any, no further discussion, roll call, please.
Okay, Councilman Spann?
Yes.
Councilwoman Barron?
Yes.
How about cigars?
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lamarcus?
Yes.
And President Haraway?
Yes, motion carries, 5-0, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, next case, Century Plaza, Z22UV-0606. Previously approved for two digital message center signs on existing freestanding signs in 2006, and would like to locate one of the digital message center signs on a new freestanding sign that will be north of Staples. This request would not exceed the two digital, two digital units previously approved, 8275 Broadway, BDC3, Plan Unit Development Highway. Any discussion from anybody?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilwoman Barron, second by Councilwoman Spann, that we approve, case number Z22UV-0606. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Hoes, motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome very much. Okay. UCF Alamat, American Auto Motors, owner ICD, case number Z29E8-0715. Revision of a special exception approval condition for a number of used vehicles to be located on a lot. The purpose of Maryville Auto Sales would like to have a total number of 20 used vehicles for the sale display on the lot, including inside and outside display. Previously approved on 7/22/15 by the BZA and on 8/25/15 by the town council for 10 used cars for sale on the lot, including inside and out display. 5924 Broadway, C2 Community Commercial.
Evening, Mr. President, Councilman, Councilwoman. Adam Swartin, on behalf of the petitioner, we have for you tonight, obviously, a proposal to increase the use, to allow for 10 additional cars, I think, to address some of the issues that have been up-concerned by the town here in the last couple of months since the business opened in late December, over the number of cars at the facility. Don't know that we need to necessarily get into the details of that, but, but obviously, based on the configuration and improvements to the building, and the fact that there is a large interior space that is part of the showroom, is the reason and the basis for the request to increase the number of cars for an additional 10.
Alright, here's, uh, when they came, she came before the BZA.
That's correct.
When she came before the BZA, prior to that, she was still, she still had more than 10 cars there, and I'm gonna tell you, that was totally unacceptable from this body, because we approved 10, and she continued to disregard what the original order was. And I understand what she's, I understand her condition, but if you remember correctly, we asked her on numerous occasions, how many cars, is 10 enough? And she, she always said yes, and then she decided at one point to have 20 cars parked out there. And the thing that we have always said here in town of Maryville is we don't let people come in and bring whatever they wanna bring to our town. It's totally unacceptable. And as we look at, I've got pictures here now, from where she's got, where she had more than, when, at the BZA, she had 13 plus, outside and inside. And the BZA, they, and if you go back and check minutes, the minutes will attest to that. And then she was, she's got cars there with outdated license plate numbers on her property, and she's parking cars next door at Mr. Transmission, which is totally unacceptable. Now, listen to me, and if you, if you say that they're not your cars, tomorrow morning, we'll go down and we'll give Mr. Transmission a ticket, and we'll be looking to shut him down. Do you understand that? They're not your cars, is what you're telling me?
They're my cars, but they are just, they're working on it.
Regardless, ma'am, that, that, you cannot house cars on somebody else's property.
Okay, but I'm not housing them.
Yeah, you are!
Mr. Councilman, finish your comments and I think we-
Go ahead, I'm done.
Yeah, no, okay. Well, first off, she is in the used car business. She actually made the record when she was back here before you on the previous application that she was actually gonna utilize neighboring businesses after the cars were purchased to bring them up to mechanical condition, to get them detailed, and then sell them on that lot. So, as it relates to some of the cars that are at adjacent businesses, she's actually utilizing the services of those businesses for that purpose. There is an issue, obviously, with the number of vehicles, not gonna speak to what she has or has not done, we've addressed that, I think, in other venues here before the town. The issue becomes is, is of the numbers that have been floated out there, that have been observed by town officials, observed by the inspectors, is what of those cars are actually for sale? The employees, including my client, drive dealer-marked vehicles with dealer plates on them. Sometimes they have advertising for sale, sometimes they do not. They also go out and purchase vehicles at auction and bring those back to the site, and there's a tee-up period of when they have to be repaired, detailed, and then put on the location for actual sale. One of the concerns I have is, is the original record made back BZA, which I was not here representing the petitioner, otherwise I probably want some clarification record, is it just says 10 cars, doesn't say 10 cars for sale. And therein lies part of the issue as to the programming and utilization of the space. So, we're here tonight because she would like to have some additional use for more cars for in the showroom.
Here's the thing, you know, and nobody up here is stupid. Now, she had six cars that were facing north in Mr. Transmission's parking lot, which, if they were going to be worked on by Mr. Transmission, they would've been parked in the front of his business, and not to the side facing her, facing her car lot. Now, you can, you can do this any way you want. We can do one or two things. We can keep it at 10, or she can admit that she's wrong and she's not gonna do it anymore, and we'll work with her. But you're not gonna come to us and tell us that everything that she's done is to get cars worked on, detailed, or whatever. I pass by there every morning at 7 o'clock, every day, and I pass by there again every day at 3 o'clock. So, I know how many cars are there.
And I go by at lunchtime, Rich, at 1, 1:00, 1:30.
So, you know, this whole thing, she's, she got you coming here representing her, and she sold you a bill of goods, we're not buying it. And I'm gonna tell you that right now.
And, and that's the other problem, Rich, again, these, the petitioners come, and they're telling this council, Plan Commission, BZA, what they're going to do. We expect them to do that. They're operating a business in the town of Maryville, and I can't help it, I can't help it that she's decided to drive those vehicles. Those 10 vehicles should stay on the lot and should be marked for sale. If they're in repair, you know, I don't wanna, this is Rich's area, this is Rich's ward, or is it Roxanne's?
It's Roxanne's.
It's Roxanne's ward, I'm sorry. Um, you know, it's on a heavily-traveled corridor, we, we've all seen it overparked, each and every one of us, and, you know, as I said before, in the previous BZA petition, any BZA action from any time can be brought back up and reconsidered. And here we are, how long has it been, Rich? Six months, less?
Yeah, and here's the other thing, Sean, I'm gonna say this publicly, if we catch cars on Mr. Transmission's again, we're gonna give him a ticket, and we're gonna bring him in, and we're gonna find out what lets, what makes him a car lot. Period.
Okay, well, I, for the record, we're not condoning the violations that happened, so-
Same part?
We're not, I'm not condoning her behavior.
Well, evidently you are, because you're sitting there telling us the same thing that she told the BZA. It's not my cars, they, first, they weren't her cars, then, uh, they didn't have, they, I only had 10, everything that they, that she, that they told her, she came back and said that it wasn't true. Now, I've had code enforcement there, she's been ticketed, we've done a lot of stuff, and we've been over-tolerant with her, and we're not gonna be tolerant anymore. Now, you have to understand that, sir.
Oh, I do understand.
We have under, we have did it, and to the point that her husband has disrespected me, and, and I know that he disrespected me, we're not gonna get into that, but I know that he did, and I'm not gonna play these games with you. Feel the way that you feel about me, we're gonna do this right. One time, and Councilwoman Lamarcus, do you have anything to say?
Uh, I think you've said quite enough, but I'd like to say that if you are utilizing the neighbors to repair your vehicles, you need to make sure that they are not parked adjacent to your property, so that they appear that they're for sale. You need to make sure they're parked in the front by the road, otherwise we will proceed with, you know, fines and tickets and whatnot.
Now, we're gonna go after, we're gonna go after Mr. Transmission.
And Mr. Transmission, too, correct.
If he permits her to park them on there, we're gonna go after him, we're gonna give him a ticket, we'll bring him to court.
I have a question, Mr.-
Or on the other side of the TIF.
Whoever is helping her park vehicles that are for sale on their property will be ticketed.
Thank you.
We, uh, the two things, Mr. President, number one, obviously, and this is for Karen and Chaz, and I think, I don't wanna speak for Roxanne and Richard, but as a town, the Broadway corridor is extremely important, especially north of 73rd Avenue.
Yes.
It's extremely important. Things that have been going on there, the Handy Andy, things north of 61st and 57th, businesses that are operated, the sods that are being done, is extremely important. We have a new retail center there where they tour the car wash down across from Mandraine. It's extremely important. Uh, my second question is more in general, John, in the car uses in the town of Maryville. Can we, and maybe this is to the BZA too, Durinda, can we make it a demand? Any used car lot that's granted a special exception, the cars that are on the lot have to have bold letters that are for sale. So, we all know, code officers, council, whoever knows that car's for sale.
That could always be a condition of any special exception approval-
I think we need to start passing that on to, yes, to our-
Any zoning approval or any use for it.
Is there any, you know, are we within our legal rights to do that and demand as a business owner that she put, you know, what the sale price is, a 97 whatever, 2007 whatever it is, and it be clearly marked, so there's no confusion?
You're in, you're within your rights, because that would be, as I understand it, simply a condition of this land use approval.
To identify which cars are in fact for sale.
This is a, this is a special exception, so it's a form of land use approval.
Mm-hmm.
So, you may condition it in any reasonable fashion.
That's, I mean, that's something for us to consider.
For the purpose of enforcing compliance with the special exception.
You know, 2007 model, and have the, have the price on it somewhere else on the windshield. So, Vicky drives by, I drive by going back to work, you're driving in your area, Roxanne's driving in her area, they see, and they know, okay, I can count those windshields, and there are 10 windshields that have, have something on them, and we know those are the 10 cars that are for sale. My final question, Mr. President, is, didn't we talk about what, how great this inside showroom was gonna be, and that we were gonna have four luxury cars inside the showroom?
Yep.
So, now, there were supposed to be 10 in the, or five in the, or four in the showroom and six on the lot, right?
That was the original plan.
I just wanna make sure my, we were-
That, that was the original plan.
Alright.
But here's the thing, Sean.
I haven't been in the showroom, which is why I asked.
I'm gonna tell you this, and don't take, nobody up here take it personal, the elected officials in the town of Maryville are ignorant, because we just let people come in, do whatever they wanna do, and they sell us a bill of goods, and then they, then, we, we bring them in, and they say, okay, Father, forgive me for I have sinned, and then they go, we say, go and sin no more, and guess what? It doesn't mean anything. And I'm tired of it. I'm just gonna be honest with you, I'm tired of it, that you guys are not gonna ruin our town, because you wanna make this something that it's not. It's a community where people live, and people work, and it's well-respected, and I'm not gonna let anybody that wasn't born and raised in the town of Maryville destroy it.
Stop, please?
You're gonna act.
You have anything else you wanna say, sir?
I, I just wanna clarify for the record, then.
We need, we need your name.
Attorney Adam Swartin. Adam Swartin, state, yeah. 130 North Main Street, Crown Point, Indiana, Oshin-Kiper, Desight, is PC. Well, I just want a clarification on your comment as to people that aren't here, residents of Maryville, they're not welcome to do business in Maryville?
No, I'm not, no, I didn't say that.
Okay.
I'm not gonna let anybody come and destroy the town. Period. I don't care what business it is.
Well, then I just wanna make for the record, they took a vacant building that was sitting, made improvements to that, subject to other conditions.
And we, and we respect that.
I, I, no, I understand, I'm not disagreeing with you, sir, I'm making my record too in defense of my client's position, that's improved a property in your corridor for tax purposes.
Well, here's the thing, why didn't you direct your person that you're representing, why didn't you direct them that they should follow the rules? You know, you, you-
Well, we, we have, and we haven't, like I-
Why didn't, why didn't you direct, direct her that she, that she should follow the rules? Or are you telling her that she could break the rules?
No, not doing that at all. In fact, I made that record clear.
That's all I'm trying to get to, that, you know, I understand you represent her, but if you represented her, then you should've told her that there's rules, and you should follow the rules, whatever they are, and if you don't agree with those rules, then you come back, as she did, and say, I'd like to change it. But don't just take it upon yourself to change it, and think that, that we're gonna be okay with it. Entertainer motion.
How much business would you?
I'll make a motion.
And your motion is what?
My motion is that we approve, um, the car-
My motion is that we approve, um, the car lot, up to 20 cars, no more than 20 cars, and that, just be respectful with the 20 cars, and make sure that every car is well-marked, and don't be using the neighbors.
A second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Okay, Councilman Span.
Aye.
Councilwoman Barron.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
I don't know. Can I vote I don't know?
No.
Can I abstain? Can I, can I give them a six-month dispensation?
Yes.
Uh, I, I still can't get, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Rich, for the discussion, I just still can't get over, you know, we approved four in the showroom and six on the lot. It's a numbers game, it's simple math, it's less than 10. I don't know why we can't add up and keep six on the lot, and why we keep bringing stuff in. You know, I mean, that'd be like Dairy Rich bringing in 14 semis and leaving them sit out so all the ice cream can melt, because they can't fit it inside their freezer. Uh, again, I don't want to step on Roxanne's toes, it's, it's her ward, but it is a major corridor for all of us. Um, I'm going to abstain, Mr. President, I, I won't go on, I'm going to abstain.
Let me say this, Sean, before you abstain, Roxanne is going to be amenable to having one of those things, I've had conversations with her, and she's just as frustrated as we are.
I just, you're, you're, I hate to say it, but because she screwed up, and she came back to us, now we're going to reward her with 10 more cars. Okay, that's like my daughter, yeah, I'll reward her for doing something wrong, your, your grandsons for doing something wrong. Yeah, I just, I, I don't, I don't know, like I said, I'd...
Okay.
I'll cha, I'll change my vote, Mr. President, but I'll tell you what, I better not, I'm, I won't speak for Roxanne. I personally don't want to see you guys back up here, bottom line.
Should I amend my motion?
No, I'll, I'll vote yes, Chrissy, I'll vote yes.
So you don't have to...
All right.
Okay.
And, um...
Yeah.
Councilwoman Lamarcus.
Keep it at 20 cars, I drive, and, drive by there every day too, and I will be counting every day for the next three months, okay? Yes.
President Hardaway.
I'm going to say, at some point, we're going to get beyond this thing. I'm going to say this, I don't want to see any cars parked in Mr. Transmission, period. If, if Mr. Transmission is going to work on your cars, then they should be parked in the front and not off to the side. You know, you guys, you guys can't...
Councilman Hardaway, what I'll suggest is, is that we have that discussion with the neighboring property owner. Again, I can't control necessarily if they move the car during the course of the day, but I understand the concern. We'll, we'll, we'll try to make it clear.
Okay, here's what we're going to do, sir, I'm going to send code enforcement down there tomorrow, and let, and let code enforcement explain it to them, the, what, what the problem is, and if they, if they can say, every time we catch cars parked over there, that they're working on those cars, then we're going to be okay with it. But if they say that those cars, they don't know why those cars are parked there, two people are going to get a ticket. And I'm telling you right now, I can guarantee you that the judge is not going to be user-friendly the next time she comes before the judge, and the next time she comes before the town, then we're not going to be user-friendly anymore either, because I understand, everything is a sleight of hand with you guys, and I'm sorry, it's not going to be sleight of hand anymore, all the cards are on the table, everybody knows where everybody stands at this point. And if you walk out of here today and say, I understand, and then you break the law again, here's our attorney, he's going to tell you exactly what's going to happen. We're not going to sit here and tolerate any more disrespect in the town of Maryville, and that's all it is right now, it's very disrespectful. You have your vote, you start.
I've been ready to vote.
Uh, President Hardaway.
Yeah. That concludes BZA actions, uh, any old business? Any new business? At this time, we'll open it up for public comment, is there any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Announcements, abandoned bike properties, committee meets tomorrow, February 10th at 11 o'clock. Town offices are closed except for emergency services, February 15th, 2016, in observation of, uh, President's Day, Plan Commission meeting will be February 16th.
I believe that was canceled.
Cancelled. Uh, the Town Council Workshop will be February, Wednesday, February 17th at 6:00 PM. Uh, the Environmental Resource Committee meeting from February 18th has been canceled. The next Town Council meeting is February 23rd at 6:30.
I make a motion that we adjourn? Thank you.